Well, we'll call this meeting to order. We can stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Polley. Trustee Lappin.
Here.
Clerk Palavich here. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Here.
Trustee Kroll.
Here.
Trustee Reiner.
Here.
Supervisor Skibby.
Here. At this point, we're to adopt the agenda. Are there any additions, corrections to, yes?
I would just like to add the COVID coordinator.
Under.
You could even do it near the coronavirus. I mean, because it kind of has to do with that.
So let's do it in between the existing two and three. We'll create a new three and then renumber below. Corona coordinator. Okay, are there any other additions, corrections to the agenda? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the amended agenda as presented. Motion on the table, do we have support?
Support.
Lappin was quick on that. Further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of adopting the amended agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose the same. Adoption concluded. This is the first opportunity for public comment. If you have any public comments, please stand to the podium. State your name for the minutes and limit yourself to three minutes. Podium is open.
Could you repeat your name?
Kamala Snyder. I think this where I have to talk. I don't know. I've never did this before. Okay, so what I wanted to address is the fire department, the ambulance drivers, the DNR. They've all been out to my house for no reason at all. My neighbor calls, they all come running out there, all the gas it costs to running them vehicles out there and never having nothing done wrong. My neighbor seems to want to call and they just run every time. I don't understand it, but my address, everybody knows my address. They all been out there plenty of times. They check and check see what I'm burning. I'm burning grass and debris and a burn barrel. I've never, never did nothing illegal and always check for a burn permit. But I'm telling you, they've been out to my house probably 20 times in about two years. And I think that's ridiculous when all I have is a little burn pile or in the middle of my driveway or in the burn barrel. We have no place else to get rid of my leaves and all the debris that I'm taking off. No place to put it other than to burn it. I live in the township. There's no place. They don't have township junk thing I can take it to. I can't take it to the woods because the DNR will get me. I can't do this. I can't do that. So what am I supposed to do with it? I have to burn it. And I always make sure the burn permit is legal. But here comes the fire department. Here comes the township fire department. I have all of them been out to my house. And it's just crazy. I just think it's not, it's, well, they need money. Why do they waste coming out to a house that isn't, doesn't need to be there? So that's what I'm, my big concern is. To me, it costs too much money to run those vehicles out there for nothing.
Can I just make a comment?
Yes.
This is your first meeting, right?
Yes.
Okay, so can you just explain how public comment works?
Right.
Yep. So at public comment, this is unfortunately an opportunity for you to either make comment, whether it's at the first public comment is general comments to be made. The second public comment is site specific to the agenda that we're discussing currently today.
Right.
So by all means, this is your right to show up. This is news, I think, to myself, if not everybody at this board.
Right.
But I can make sure that I give you an email because there's my email because I would like to know why this is occurring on such a regularity as well.
Because my neighbor's not right.
I can't.
You can't say that. And I can't say that, but I'm saying it. I just think it's, why do they keep coming out and checking? And I've never gotten a ticket, never gotten nothing. It's always been that I can legally do it. And I just don't understand why they would take their gas to come out there with them big vehicles for nothing. And even the DNR. I mean, I'm just, you know, this is the only time I thought I could bring it up and.
No, by all means, if, if you could, could you write your number so I could contact you?
Sure. Sure.
Because I don't want it on the record, your telephone number.
Right, right. Okay. I wasn't sure.
Thank you very much. Deputy clerk.
Chairman, if.
Yes, sir.
If I may, I just, I'll indicate that I kind of smelled the problem here, I think. And I'll have comment on suggestions and discussion.
Okay, I appreciate it. The podium is open. Public comment. Okay, seeing none online, is there any public comment? Again, anybody online with public comment? Thank you for your comments, ma'am. Moving forward. Payment of the bills. Is there a motion to make payment of the bills? We have a motion on the table to make payment of the bills. Is there support? Supported by trustee Lappin. Any further discussion? Seeing and roll call both, please.
Clerk Palavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Kroll.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polley.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Moving forward in the agenda to the minutes of June 24th, a special meeting, June 28th, a regular meeting, and June 30th, a special meeting. Are there any corrections or comments to the minutes presented? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I had pointed out to the clerk that there was one word added that probably shouldn't have been in, I think it was the 30th minutes.
Yeah.
It's no big deal.
But I will correct it.
Yeah.
It says motion carried unanimously and the motion was carried, but it was not unanimously.
And in my absence, I don't know if it's unanimous when I'm not here or not, but.
So with, with that language correction to the minutes of the 30th, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes presented. We have a motion by trustee Lappin. Is there support? Support. Support by trustee Kroll. Further discussion? Obviously, trustee Reiner got that corrected, so. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose the same. Minutes approved. Moving forward to correspondence, today we have before us the minutes of June 15th, a zoning board appeal. Then a notice appearing at Alpena Power Company and then also continued favorite is the FERC, Federal Energy Regulatory Commission on the Thunder Bay project and Norway Point Development. I'll entertain a motion to receive and file the correspondence.
So moved.
We have a motion on the table to receive and file. Is there support?
Support.
And it's been supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of receiving and filing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Correspondence has been received and filed. Moving forward in the agenda to all business fire department update. Cash?
So we've had a couple of meetings with fire department personnel. Think it's been a good conversation. And, you know, at our second meeting, we had more individuals there, so I think we're making a lot of progress in that aspect. And we're understanding their side and they're understanding our side. We got obviously a lot of work ahead of us, but I think we're making good headway, so I'm pleased with that. I don't know if any of the other members would like to.
I think the communication has definitely opened up where we're being very honest with each other and how we feel and what we think. So I think that's good. And I think the more open communication, the better trust we're going to have.
Yeah, I totally agree. The, the two elements that we, that we sort of zeroed in on the first meeting were communication and trust. Those are the, those are the key aspects, I think, where we need to go and how we're going to get there. Last night, meeting was good. In fact, I don't know if we actually have a guest I see that had walked in. I won't put you on the spot, but Rhino is visiting from South Africa on his way to Australia, and so he just sort of stopped by Alpena just for something to do, I guess. And so, and he's, he's going to help us to come up with a a diagnosis and to move forward on that. Perhaps at some later date, we can invite you back to give us an update or maybe the chief might give us some information too. And so far, it's been, it's been very fruitful. And I think those lines of communications have already begun to loosen up some.
Well, and at this point in time, because I don't know the young gentleman before us, if you'd like to take the podium and introduce yourself to the board so that all members of the squad could be a surprise as to the potential.
Just so you're aware, he has offered to facilitate in the two groups on a volunteer aspect, so and he can tell you a little more about his background.
Perfect. So, yeah. Impromptu, but let me do my best. So, yeah, I'm a, I'm a tourist at the moment. My parents-in-law live in Alpena and we are here in a sabbatical while we are in the process of relocating to Australia and their borders are still shut. So we decided to come on a sabbatical and stay in Alpena for a little bit. So my time is free at the moment and I come from a background of nonprofit organizational development. So I have 15 years plus experience in working in large nonprofit organizations. I also have some academic background as to the subject. I've just finished my master's degree in industrial and organizational psychology. So I saw the, the news flash about Alpena's fire department and I thought as a tourist, maybe I could help just as a volunteer and just to come and peek into the, the whole restructuring process of the fire department. And, yeah, so basically I've been involved since Friday and done a lot of listening and taking notes and attended some of the meetings. And, yeah, from here on, I think it was agreed that I will help to facilitate the process and just submit a bit of a plan, kind of a roadmap to change for the fire department and I'll submit that to the trustees in two weeks' time and then hopefully start documenting the process of, of changing and, and not going back to where the fire department was and improving hopefully. So, yeah, I hope that sums it up.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any questions? Just your name.
Oh, sorry. It's Rhino, R-Y-N-O. And my surname is Schultz, S-C-H-O-L-T-Z, T-Z, sorry. I'm still getting used to that.
I understand that is Z-Z. Well, wonderful. I, I do feel, I, I guess I'll look to legal. Should we actually just make a motion to allow, even though there's no expense, or is it just a, how should we fold that in?
Oh, gosh, just, I mean, the minutes reflect that we've got somebody willing to do it. I mean, that would.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're covering all of our bases as well, but you appreciate your, your volunteerism. Trustee Polley.
Do you have any experience in fire departments?
No, not at all. So this is absolutely brand new, but my academic experience is pretty generic, especially in nonprofits. I believe there will be a lot of similarities in fire departments versus nonprofit management in terms of budgeting and the financial aspects of it. So I'm by no means an expert on fire departments, but I believe we, we have a lot of expertise in the fire department itself. I think my role would just be as a generic kind of organizational development consultant.
Are there any other questions for?
Yes.
Yes.
Just as the committee made any contacts with any kind of a consulting firm as far as fire departments.
We haven't gotten that far yet, so we're working on things, but.
We are looking to find other combined fire departments to see what best practices they have, what they do differently, what they, what they would get rid of, what they would add, you know, those, those sorts of things. Because it's a common problem across, across Michigan and I presume across the country. But now we haven't gotten deep into the, into that yet, but we are for sure looking at other municipalities of similar size. We're not going to concern ourselves so much with large urban areas because wouldn't be a very good model. And so I have come across, I think, four municipalities that of similar size that have combined systems that we'll be talking to.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Norm, did you have any? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, bud.
And do you have one?
By all means. Okay.
What kind of procedures or what is in place in reference to keeping our constituents safe? Where are we at today with a minimal amount of people that we've hired? I heard of no hires.
No, all the shifts are being covered at this point, so we don't have any vacant holes as far as I'm aware, right?
We, we don't. Paid-on calls are filling 24-hour shifts. So all of July is scheduled.
So we actually had several paid-on, well, in fact, at both of the meetings, the paid-on columns have grown at each meeting, so they're obviously they're feeling a little bit more comfortable and so they step back up.
Okay. Anything else to add from the update? What is, I guess, a generic timeline? Obviously, there's a lot of emphasis on a direction and a plan, but what would be an acceptable timeline that we should be given consideration for this? I mean, do we have benchmarks that were, or I know that it's, we're in the infancy of this discussion to begin with, but are there benchmarks that have been set to?
Right, so we want to do incrementally, probably, you know, the coming up with a short-term plan, something with six months, a year and that type of thing. But like I said, I think in the next two weeks, we're going to get a lot done. Hopefully, we'll be able to start rolling some of that out or at least recommendations or suggestions will come back to this board, so. But, yeah, we understand that maybe we have a three-month, six-month and so forth, so.
Well, I think at this point in time, we should probably actually entertain every month until then start expanding to three.
You know, I mean, we'll have a plan. At least something to present.
Yeah.
And I believe that we have, what was the, we just put the ad back in indeed, right?
The, um, yes. It was in Alpena News last week. It's on some union websites. I don't know, did you get, reach out to the universities and colleges?
I have. We're, we're public.
Yeah.
Do you have anything to add to the update?
Just agree.
I, what I just wanted to add with Reno's presence is that, that was, I think, incredibly ironic and fortuitous that he showed up when he did with the skills that he brings, because I think it's exactly some of the things you guys have been asking for. And I, I think he's going to be able to really help, help facilitate that. And just, just to touch on a couple of the things we've talked about as far as what to bring you guys within the next two weeks is developmental plans, conducting exit interviews with those people that, that kind of mass migrated and try to get a handle on that. Gather and disseminate critical run data that we can go back and try to get a handle on this as far as coverage and safety and who's, who's doing what, where. Revisit the required skills and what type of skill set the people we do have bring to the department. And another thing, whether it's appropriate or not, that we, we have talked about revisiting, I'd made a comment at one of the meetings that because we have a set budget to look forward to for the year does not necessarily mean we have to spend that money. So we're going to look seriously at, at whatever type of cutbacks tighten in the belt. We can perform as well as going forward with some of our discussion has been to continue on with. Tim and I had talked, actually, it's been on what, two or three years since we've talked about any ordinances for cost recovery? That kind of got put by the wayside. I think it's time to bring that back up to forefront. So, and just one quick thing I want, I want to add for a question that Mr. Polley brought up is I just want to remind everybody that we do have as well as a groundswell of some of the paid-on calls returning to participate. We have always had the mutual aid path with Thunder Bay firefighters in agreement and that continues in agreement. So should we have, I just throw out a an example is if we were to have something near Haken Road, but on our side, we most definitely are going to have all of, you know, Maple Ridge coming. I still have instructed the guys to, to get as many people coming as possible as far as mutual aid and as much as city press skills and whoever to continue that coverage. That's where we're going with it right now, but.
Any further discussion about update? Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving forward to new business. Pratscape invoice for three months of service to the tune of $4,480. I spoke with Mr. Pratt yesterday after looking at this. Basically said it's unacceptable to not invoice on a monthly basis. But, yeah, so.
Do you have any idea how much it costs per cut?
Broken down by my math, $37 per site.
Because.
Outside of.
And I wondered about the, because it looked like there was a, a separate cost for the spring cleanup and down, down trees.
Yes.
I didn't know what that meant, if that was.
We had two of our sites, our lift station sites that had Princeton, Michigan. And I believe there was some, I don't know if there was tree work at the M32 site as well. I think primarily it was Princeton and Michigan where we had a bunch of dead ash that had fallen and they had to cut and clean it up. So that was the outlier. Because I, when I looked at that total amount, I was a little bit taken back as well.
But we don't know how many times he cut the grass. I mean, he could have cut the grass once in April. So how did you come up with your number?
Because he, and that's what I asked him in terms of monthly, to pull out every site that they hit. And I can, if we want, we can table this so we can bring that list of how he's going to show the justification moving forward. I, therein, it's not how I would have presented it either, so.
Yeah, I guess I would like a more detailed invoice.
I mean, I guess I just feel, you know, if this is basically cleanup and cutting grass, we should be getting quotes on these. I mean, a landscaper too, I mean, he's, he's awesome work. I'm not saying anything negative about him, but I think we do need to put out for that what it's going to cost, you know, and go from there. We just can't keep. I'm not sure he did a great job, but I think we need to put it out for that.
Yes, well, Norm and then Russ.
Just how we received.
Yeah.
That's what, yeah. That was my question as well as the, because I think we need more detail, but the other thing is, do, do we have this out on a contract now?
They are actually, this is kind of a, we have a contract with, that he does work with F&amp;B. This contract for the services that he provides is through us for our sewer lift stations and sites. So Ms. Winn and I actually had that conversation this morning is do we continue to contract for these services or should we just let it pass through F&amp;B?
Well, here's, here's kind of where I'm at. I mean, it's figures to $37 a site. I don't know how big a site is. I don't know how long it takes to cut it. And I really don't want to micromanage this, but, but on the other hand, when you get a bill like this, it's kind of like, oh, darn. So.
Yeah, and I've asked.
Notice how I said it. And so, but, yeah, I think we need more detail and, and I think we need to know some time and number of crew.
Yes.
Make a motion to table this till the next meeting to get through the details on this invoice.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to table, or a motion on the table to table. We have support. Any further discussion?
Well, maybe we can get a schedule and that stuff to go along with for future. At least we know what we're looking at then.
Anticipate the cost, yeah.
Yeah, because this was a bill out of the blue.
Yeah, all, trust me, yeah.
I think we are.
Three months of, and then, so that can, I've already started that conversation, I see. So we can get that and we can have further detail for our next meeting.
So we actually have a signed contract with that to do this, all the signed agreement.
Not for sewer lift stations, but for landscape restoration and other sites.
But that's what F&amp;B.
That, that's one. The reason that this kind of spurred up was we're already into spring and sites needed to be cleaned. I don't disagree, but when we have a history and experience with one provider and work needed to be done, it was just get it done at that point in time rather than have a field. So we'll, we'll get some further clarification for the, the next meeting and we'll, we'll go from there. Any further discussion? All those in favor of tabling signify by saying aye. Oppose the same. So the honor subsequent agenda. Moving forward to the next item of new business is the principles of governance. Michelle?
This just came from the mail from MTA.
So this is. Well, usually if you're going to put some in, so anyways, the reason that we, I'd like, if you're going to put it in there, let's have some discussion about it. But then I'll, I'll take it from here. No worries. So the principles of governance is a, is a document that Michigan Township Associations sends to all 1,200-plus townships stating that it is, are basically our ethical responsibility to lead by these standards. We have historically signed said document. It's on the shelf over there, but this has been at least updated with current trustees. And at this point, I'd make them entertain a motion to move forward with signing and declaring the principles of governance as, as presented by Michigan Townships Association. A motion on the table to move forward with the principles of governance. Is there support?
Support.
Been moved and supported. Further discussion?
Where's this going?
In a
Some day to a lawyer's.
Tiny little frame that will probably be mounted onto the wall.
It's, the current one is in that frame over there.
I was at another township meeting last night and they had their old one framed and adopted it or replacing it with a new one.
And so to your question, trustee Polley, where is it going physically or?
Well, this is MTA, but is this for the, is this going back to MTA?
No, this is just presented and shown on display here. Sorry. Is there any other discussion? If seeing none, roll call, please, or roll call. No, we don't have any cost. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye. I oppose the same. No. Okay. Business pass. Moving down to the new number three Corona coordinator, Laura.
When COVID hit last year, and I'm not sure what we did with that, but anyway, I was
Absent.
No.
Coordinator. And I just feel that the supervisor has been handling the, these types of things that come up. When anything, I mean, we have the next item in here, coronavirus, local fiscal recovery fund. And I mean, the supervisor's been handling. I mean, the supervisor's been handling this stuff. So to me, it just makes sense that.
Well, the, the good news is, is that there's no need for a coordinator anymore.
What are we coordinating?
It's, it's been, so that position has automatically defaulted back to non-existent. So. So. I think that kind of covers really just about everything. There's no, no state need for it. So. We don't, we can save a motion. So yes, moving down to Corona Local Fiscal Recovery Funds are otherwise known as the overarching umbrella of the ARPA. This is the, the next level of federal funds that is kind of post CARES Act. This is, and I don't have all my notes before me right now, but I believe that our designation as a non entitlement unit or an NEU. Is roughly $860,000 to be dispersed over a four-year plan. That those monies are to be. Well, before we even get to the money. There are no official rules. To these monies. This is plagued us with CARES Act monies for everything that we've ever touched. Including payroll reimbursement. So we have three options. And I'll just give you a succinct overlap of this. We have three options. We can deny. Of which those monies would be re-diverted back to the state of Michigan to allocate however they see fit. We accept, and if we accept, we have three primary principal uses. There are some offshoots. It would be water, infrastructure, sewer infrastructure or broadband infrastructure. Like I said, those aren't the only things. But the primary utilization intent of the monies. Or we have the ability to defer. The deferment, I have not gained any further clarification from the Department of Treasury would be one aspect of. The potential for municipalities to pool monies together. My question to Rod Taylor, Department of Treasury for clarification is if we opt to defer or any of our local municipalities opt to defer. Can said municipality choose which municipality they would defer their monies to? That has not been clarified as of yet. As of July 6th, the state finally opened up the web portal. On a brand new website called Elite, which all tracking will be going through. The first time I tried to log into the site, it had errors. So everything that has been discussed with these ARPA monies or as now it's even further clarified by the CLF RF fund. Has the first disbursement would take place once we make the designation as a board of one of the three options. We would get 50% of the monies through the state. And then we'd have to expend all monies in four years. My position as the supervisor with this is to continue to take our time. And let both the state and federal government figure out the rules to the game before we start playing it. Because we hopped on the payroll reimbursement and after we submitted all of our paperwork, they changed the rules. And then that eventually led to us cutting a check of reimbursement to the state of Michigan for $588 and change. So I think we have to have bigger conversations because obviously we do have water and sewer infrastructure. At this morning's Economic Development Committee meeting through Target. Unbeknownst to me, I think it's more of a population density related report, but Opina County has 92% coverage for broadband. I don't think that's a geographical truth. I think that's a truth that's displaced or displaced by population density. So we have a lot to think about. And I think that eventually we should probably actually have a committee. Since both Russ now will have more time, I heard before the meeting got started due to his retirement. But to actually start looking and meeting with our community partners and say, are there potentials to partner? Together with the monies. And how really best to either utilize those monies for the greatest good of the vast majority of our population or how to approach it? Yes.
Well, Norm hasn't.
Yeah, yes.
This, this money is basically for water and sewer.
No, or broadband or the three overarching primary. But you can start splitting hairs. You can look at two revenue loss. There, there's a lot of. Deviations from the, the three primer, but as I stated to the county commissioners. If you've utilized previous CARE Act monies, i.e. the payroll reimbursement fund. Don't look at revenue loss because that's going to create not only one headache, but two headaches because you have seven years of federal reporting. And then you have utilization of state and federal monies that may negate any additional funds being used for that function. So.
Two or three thoughts on this. One is, and this I just want clarification, NEU is a new, that's us. And, and that's, which means we weren't considered part of these funds at first because we were a municipality. Am I correct? That's how I read this.
So yeah, so there's the, the variation there to an NEU or a non entitlement. Entity such as ourselves. Is the primary difference between that is an NEU is funded through the state. So federal monies go to the state and then dispersed to smaller counties, villages, cities and townships that meet their, their bar of.
We're at the bottom of the triple down ladder.
Yeah. We're, there's a long way for a little grape juice to fall from that grape before we know what happens.
The other problem is you've already identified is, is that. The rules change when the politics change. So as different people come into offices, it different. People come into department heads and bureaucracies, rules tend to get rewritten and changed. And accountability standards change. So it makes it very difficult to, to work with these kinds of things. Now I will tell you that my focus, I'm looking at you as I say this, but because I'll stare you right in the eye. Is not water and sewer. It is broadband. And, and it is because I know of people and, and it won't serve. If we do anything with broadband to assist in getting it out to rural areas, it won't serve the majority of the population because the majority of us do have. But there are people out in North Point area and other areas of this township that. In, in the last year and a half, when they've had to work from home, couldn't work from home. And so they left their homes and moved elsewhere. And I know one such couple. And so to me. I don't know how far $800,000 is a drop in that bucket, how much of a drop in the bucket that is. But I would tell you that if you throw me on such a committee, that's probably going to be where my attention will go. So they're just warning you to be.
So do you know what you said, sort of possibly take a wait and see approach? Do you know what that timeline would be before it becomes problematic for us? So what I'm saying ultimately is those, those tentacles of off those three options. To, to sort of mine down a little bit more and find out exactly what those.
What the cutoff, what, what the cutoff date would be to make even the initial, because if, if by everything I've read thus far. Sending no determination is a determination that you're going to accept it. So I can, I just wanted to have, because this is going to be a conversation that we have ongoing for, for a period of time. Because are we looking to, to partner with other municipalities or what is the goal of? Cause I also share some of trustee Reynard's position as well is. If we're getting this money from the state level. How, how can that money, that $860,000 plus dollars serve the greatest good? In the confines of what it's meant to be used for. Currently our, our water and our sewer infrastructure, even though it could always use every single cent that we can give it. Only really effectively impacts 35% of our population, 30, 35% of our population. So it doesn't have to be for one particular thing. We can, and people have already started sending outside groups have sent requests. To us for utilization of the monies that we're receiving. I know that the county has received a lot of requests. The county's cutoff date for request of their $5.5 million that they're looking to receive. I believe they're looking to have that conversation at their full regular scheduled meeting in September. So I just wanted to have this initial because this is going to be tedious. And, and yes, Laura, you are, I have been doing this, but these are revenue funds. So these are things that you should really be helping with too. And that's how we can get it done. But this is, I'm always leery, especially with the lessons learned with the CARES Act monies of let's not rush into. Any direction or commitment until we have thorough discussion, not only with our community, but our community leaders. Did you have your hand?
Yeah, somewhat. So can we accept it? And then obviously you're going to, we need time to develop some type of plan.
Yeah.
I mean, can we do that?
Yeah, yeah, you can do it, but before, because there's, there's also one heck of a process to sending it back. So before we even get to the point of just straight saying, we accept it. We should, I want to make sure and I'll get all the information to every, every trustee to say, is this? Something that without having an end goal, is this something that we want to participate in? Yes, it always sounds nice to say, here's $860,000. But for the amount of time that I, I know that I put into the payroll reimbursement and the time that I had to pick Michelle's brain and. How much energy went into that debacle? I'm always a little leery. Free money is not free. So.
I think we should make our best effort for the greater good of our community.
Oh, yeah.
Regardless of what that is.
Well, I, I wholeheartedly agree. That's why I'm saying, well, I'll have, this will be something that will probably, until we make decisions. Will probably be perpetually on the agenda so that we can continuously have those discussions.
Would I understand?
Steve, one second.
So you said you've received some requests?
Yeah.
So what, what type of requests are they, are people interested in that are sending?
That we release all monies to local small businesses that have been negatively impacted.
I didn't hear that as one of the three options.
It's one, it's one of the side little.
Well, there's.
Three primary.
So that's the only request.
That, that's the only thing that we've received thus far. And that would be part of the conversation.
From an organization or from?
Yeah.
A person?
Person that's.
Jump ahead, but do we want to do something like the county and maybe open it up? A month or so?
I, I think before we open that floodgates, we as a board have had the baseline foundation of which direction we want to even take. So my recommendation as it stands currently would, I think more eyes are better than, I, I'll take point on it. But I would like at least a couple other sets of eyes so that we can make sound recommendations back to this board.
Hurts to have suggestions, right? I mean, or ideas.
Oh, no, no. I mean, suggestions are suggestions. Opinions are. Yes, Laura, did you have?
No.
Okay, thank you.
So my answer is quite, my question was answered.
In one way or another.
Yep.
Copy that. So I just wanted to have, because they just, July 6th was quote unquote, the kickoff. Date for non entitlement units to start applying. We have time, so this will be on. If there's a couple volunteers, I'll take a couple volunteers to.
What is the deadline date?
To make a decision?
Yes.
I think it's, I forget, I want to say it's an August. I mean, we'll have by next meeting, we can make a determination of acceptance, deferment or one of the three options.
August is not.
No, it's going to happen quick, but, and then we can, like you said, trustee, for all this, we can, we can make the decision to accept. And then we have four years to really show that we've expended that money for those purposes. A lot of governmental entities are actually going, starting this entire process utilizing their CPAs right from the start. I would actually say we should probably do that for the amount of hours that I had to come back and take, intact. The payroll reimbursement with our auditing firm this year. I would rather have them involved right from the beginning so that we're making sure that our auditing trail. Because these are monies that we'll have to continuously track for, you know, five to seven years.
Do we have to be accountable to both the federal and the state?
For a non entitlement unit, we're actually accountable just to, as my interpretation, just the state. But I don't know if Big Brother is going to cut that string line. So I just wanted to have an introduction to the ARPA money, otherwise now known as the Corona Local Fiscal Recovery Fund.
Yeah.
It's a mouthful. It's a wonderful one. So I will have this continuing on our agenda. And that way we can at least step in the first direction of one of the three primary options of accept, deny or defer.
I'll offer myself after August to.
Does anybody else want to volunteer?
Kind of tapped right now.
Yeah, I was going to say you're. I'm, I'm.
Normal. Okay. Laura, if you want to.
I'm in the middle of taxi.
It's always somebody's taxi.
So Norm, Russ.
And myself. Yeah. Anyway, so this will be back on the agenda. So. We'll bring more back to the table and we'll take it the next step moving forward. Continuing down the line to the next item of new businesses, ordinance 137, which is our current light ordinance. I want this on the agenda because we need to have a mechanism in 137. That has some capabilities to address extreme cases. So Tim, would you like to?
Section three of ordinance 137, which is a town's polite ordinance, has a pretty standard. Procedure that municipalities would use in any event. First, it requires the person enforcing the ordinance to attempt to verbally contact the person. Sometimes you can safely do that. Sometimes you can't. You can try it by telephone, but attempt. So that's reasonable. And a lot of times that remedies a violation when they know that neighbors are complaining. For the township is focusing on them. So that's fine. Then the procedure is if the person or organization receives the verbal request at a deadline for remedying the violation from the township official. The township official shall inspect the subject property following the expiration of the deadline to determine if the violation has been remedied. No problem there. If the violation has not been remedied, the township officials shall then provide written notice. That's standard too. I'd always recommend that because sometimes that does the trick. And I always recommend that I write the attorney letter after that saying it's getting serious and here's what happens when you go to court. And here's what the fines are and the cost and the injunction and all the other things and contempt and all the things that can come from that. That works a lot of times. So, so far no problem at all. Then the ordinance goes on to another step. That the official must. Then provide a written notice stating that the person has a right to an informal hearing. At the township, not before the township board, really an informal hearing with the township official. So what that does, what we're finding, we've got an extreme case right now is, is delaying the process. So it would either be stating that in extreme cases. We can skip that step. I think that's too subjective and vague. I think it'd be better to just eliminate that final step. Keep the previous steps because that's what we do anyway. And those can all be done quickly too. Try to make verbal contact. I've given you a written notice. The attorney's giving written notice. We've given you a firm deadline. They've ignored it. That's when we get the extreme case. We know that we're not, it's not likely to get compliance. Issue the light ordinance ticket, municipal civil infraction ticket. If we did that, it would be me drafting a simple amendment, removing a portion of this ordinance. And I can say just from experience. There's never been a township ordinance enforcement case in this township or anyone I've represented that somebody just slapped a ticket on some. there's never been a township, uh, ordinance enforcement case in this township or anyone I've represented that somebody just slapped a ticket on somebody. It's always been a warning, it's always been a chance to remedy the problem.
Yeah. And that's like, uh, as Tim said, this is, this, we now have, uh, an instance where there's a case that's been a case before, uh, unfortunately knows our timelines that we can't deviate from, uh, at the cost of the neighbor's wellbeing, whether it's sleep, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Um, so it's my, my discussion with Tim of, I, I do feel that we need to have, not that it would be an automatic steadfast route to take, but in the rare instances, we need to have something that cuts that timeline and gives the neighborhood some relief. Because this is an egregious case.
Normal postings and all that, so we, is, is it just an automatic amendment or does this have to go with the public?
Yeah, I'd have to amend, I'd have to amend the ordinance, so, yeah, we do the notice of introduction and, and all that. So that's gonna be, you know, a bit time consuming, but thinking really a future cases, case we're talking about, you know, we'll proceed through the steps. It's really usually, you know, the, the pretty rotten cases where, when we get to a ticket.
Yeah.
So you get the ticket and that's essentially essentially a notice to appear.
Yeah, like a court complaint.
Right, and then, uh, and then at that particular point in time, then the fun begins with the court.
Yeah, the court's, uh, pretty prompt, uh, will schedule an initial appearance where give the person a chance to admit or deny the, the violation and, uh, and then if they deny it, uh, then they schedule a formal hearing and it's, it's been pretty prompt.
Yeah.
And then Judge Lacrosse has been very good. Sometimes he will, we'll hear, hear the evidence if the person doesn't, uh, admit the violation at that stage. Uh, and a lot of times you'll say, all right, we're coming back in twenty-one days, some, some relatively short amount of time and Golden's gonna tell me whether this had any impact on you, whether you cleaned it up and you ready, the penalties are gonna be stiff if there's still a problem then, or sometimes they'll issue a ruling right then and then give them a short amount of time to, uh, to comply, if they don't, then it's, we bring them back in the court for contempt, of course, which could be jail.
So what? So in these extreme situations, when probably not a whole lot's gonna move the needle for some of these folks. At what point is the township bear the expense of just cleaning it up? And, or do we ever?
Uh, that's, that, that is a, a possibility. Uh, the district court now is injunctive powers, equitable powers to issue an injunction. Uh, usually if we get to the contempt stage where I've gotta file an additional motion, judge, you gave this person thirty days. It's ninety, they haven't done anything, they've added to the problem. Uh, hold them in contempt, violating your order. Uh, then courts tend to get creative, what do you need? Um, again, they could throw the person in jail, always give additional fines and costs, direct some cost for the township hopefully. Uh, but, uh, I have, in rare cases, said, what is, let us remove the things, I don't know if Alpine Township's ever had to do that, uh, sometimes it's, that's not a great remedy, because you know the guy's just gonna fill it back up. Or the township says, why should we have to incur this expense, make it a lien on the property, but it might be prior liens, you know, all kinds of uncertainty. But, uh, I have one in another county, another township where just that threat was made and it's their stuff, it's their salvage scrap stuff. And basically, we're gonna take your stuff and you're not gonna get any money for it and, uh, you better move it to an appropriate location and I gave that about a five percent chance of working and it, and it worked, so. It's a nice surprise, but.
So can we put ourselves in a situation taking that tact where, where, let's use that example. If that person said that, uh, that he lost, that you, you invert, you negatively impacted me and I'm, I'm gonna sue you for essentially inverse condemnation or something like that. Is, can you get down that rabbit hole somewhere along that?
You know, I, I'm comfortable when I've got a court order.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then the person's at all kinds of due process chances, uh, remedy it and, uh, and that is the, uh, uh, I don't know if I've ever had a township that actually went in and did the work and imposed that way, I'm aware of another one.
We haven't in my tenure. So then.
Well, I'm comfortable with something like that, so, uh, I would make a motion that we, that we move forward with the recommendations of council to remove, uh, the, the, the final segment of that, of that, what section three was?
What subsections is it?
Yes, sub subsection three violations and penalties of ordinance one thirty-seven.
Okay.
Removing subsection B.
Three B?
Three B.
And then that would afford us, like I said, the ability and the rare instance to go after the, the original process, because it's never gone straight to, here's your ticket. It's, these are individuals, this case that I'm thinking of is, is a, a bad case. And unfortunately, it's exacerbated by the fact that he knows that we can't legally do anything for X amount of more time. Uh, so twenty hours a day and usually the only time that it's quiet is when everybody's gone anyway, so. This would be a, a long way to help those rare cases where instead of allowing people to continue bad behavior, just put a, a stop to it sooner.
So this has nothing to do with physical flight, it has to do with nuisance.
Oh, no, this is, this case is both, but this is of, a nuisance in terms of noise, uh, but blight because of the conditions. And it's, it's, it's self-created. But i- in my experience thus far, over four years, this, this is something that needs to be strengthened because one, you have a property owner that is a- egregiously at fault and negating every aspect of zoning and ordinance one thirty-seven because he knows that he has eighteen more days to operate. We've lost that war and the neighbors are paying the price. Yes. Do we have a, we have a motion, do we have support?
No one has supported.
We support?
I will support.
Okay, we have support, yes, discussion.
Uh, Tim, uh, I mean, you know this area and I, I do not, uh, would it be appropriate to look into adding for a second or third offense, a higher level, like a criminal type ordinance violation?
The municipal civil infraction statutes max the, the fine at five hundred dollars. I've seen some that say, well, let's make the first offense a hundred dollars and the second one two fifty. And my advice there is, if we're in court, this is probably an extreme case.
Right.
And, and so I don't want, I want the judge to be able to go, it's five hundred and I want to be able to write to him and say it's five hundred. Um, with, with, yeah, that's not what I was talking about, falling back from that, my thought was, you go to court, you've got that judgment.
Problem resolved through court order and there's a fine paid. But the actual problem, behavior or, or blight continues or resumes and you have to start a new, start all over with a new case. Is there such a thing as having a second offense criminal?
The, the, the criminal aspect, uh, as a practical matter wasn't great, the person was entitled to a court-appointed attorney. Yeah, beyond a reasonable doubt. Judges.
Just don't like to pay that out of there.
Judges were, uh, reluctant to jail somebody for junk. Uh, and then the good news is, i- if we do get a judgment, we've got the contempt remedy following that for somebody that, so I've got one in another township where it's like eight years after we got the blight ordinance, municipal civil infraction judgment, and he just resumed. And so I did a show cause motion under that same original judgment.
And that worked?
It worked.
After eight years?
Yeah.
No, no, uh, no statute limitations on contempt.
Well, there's still a judgment and also.
Are there any other discussion?
I would just like to see that we strengthen it as much as we can because, um, we owe it to our citizens to, to keep this stuff from happening, so make it as strong as we can.
Yep, it, it'll give the, uh, it'll still provide ample opportunity for a person to fix a problem. And some do, a lot do.
Most do.
Uh, yeah, most do, uh, but it, it gives the, the teeth to the enforcement person to, uh, to say, look, this is one we need to act on.
And I, I also like the idea that you're taking me up.
I just wanted to, I mean, it, it's just very helpful if the ordinance could be in our packet, just so we have a chance to like peruse it before the meeting.
Yeah.
Just because that.
Yeah, so when I put this all together, I'll, I'll, I'll put the original with the amendment that'll show specifically what's being changed.
Yeah, because we're, that's why I just want to have the introduct and the tip of the hat, I vote to allow this amendment to at least continue moving forward rather than having this expense and then say, here's the amendment that.
We're not voting to approve the, the amendment today, we're voting to allow the.
The, the motion is as such to allow legal counsel to move forward with the, the proposed amendment language. So we have a motion, we have support, we've had discussion, is there any further discussion? If not, uh, roll call please.
Treasurer, Allery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polley.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Pilovich, yes, Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Thank you. Yep, so then we'll have, at our next meeting, we'll have an introduction.
Yep.
And then it would be adopted at the subsequent meeting. Uh, moving forward, uh, Ms. Wynn, would you like to, uh, address the board as to our operations report from May and June?
Good morning. Um, so in your packet is the May and June operations report for water and sewer. Um, operational highlights, um, are laid out in there, I don't think we need to go through them, um, individually. Also in there is, um, a summary of the work orders performed to date through June. Uh, total work orders, uh, for the first six months, five hundred and three work orders and one thousand one hundred and fifteen missed dig requests that were responded to. The maintenance allowance through June is inco- included in there. Uh, maintenance allowance, uh, was set up to incorporate, um, operation, uh, you know, routine operation supplies, you know, such as uh, lubricants and, and spare parts and for the, um, water and sewer department as well as water service repairs, which the majority of the cost to date for the, this contract year have been utilized for, uh, water service repairs um, throughout the township. Current standing is two hundred and fifty-two thousand four hundred and twenty-nine dollars and forty cents, uh, which represents an overage of the two hundred and fifty thousand in the contract of two thousand four hundred and twenty-nine dollars and forty cents. Um, the contract is through, I believe, August nineteenth or eighteenth. Um, at that point in time, the maintenance allowance would be reconciled. Um, and then, um, the overage would be invoiced to the township for the additional costs. So the, the way that kind of works is it's part of your every month invoice, a portion of it. And then as it's expended, it's tracked for you guys and then, um, invoiced at the end, you know, for any kind of overages. Um, are there any questions?
Yeah.
Are you, do you anticipate between now and end of that contract, uh, any other unusual expenditures that would go beyond this, uh, deeper into this two fifty?
Yes, um, actually, we've had a couple, uh, water service repairs that have not been invoiced yet. Um, as well as some site restoration for, uh, repairs that were performed last fall and over the winter that have not been yet completed. And there are also pavement repairs that need to follow with that, we're having some difficulty in, um, coordinating with the pavement contractor to get those uh, pavement restorations done, so, um, it may end up being at this point in time, would estimate maybe another ten or ten thousand or so. Um, just based on what I know of that has occurred. Of course, obviously, we have another, um, month to go, so anything could possibly happen, but we hope not.
Any other questions for Ms. Wynn?
Well, I have discussion, I have questions. You say another month to go, uh, I guess I was figuring this is a, this first quarter of a, of our fiscal year, so is this not?
The contract is an annual contract that goes from, I believe it was August nineteenth of twenty twenty. So this, even though that you're in the first quarter of your fiscal year and so you're not needing to make any kind of a budget amendment for this, um, it's definitely something that, um, is a, a change in the, in the contract. So like I said, the contract here does not follow the fiscal year.
So right now, as I understand it, uh, with the month remaining, we, we may be looking at about a thirteen thousand shortfall or.
Well, yeah, it would just be, it would be an invoice that would be submitted to the township for reimbursement as that's finalized and then, you know, on August nineteenth or whatever, the next contract year starts and we start with another two hundred and fifty thousand dollar allowance that is accrued over twelve months. So, um, basically, it's, it's sort of a, a amount that, um, for example, we have, we're only a month or so into the contract. Um, so we hadn't received that much in the way of funds for that from the township when some of these water service repairs had to be performed, so F and B paid for those upfront, even though we hadn't received all of that funding from you guys yet, so that's why it runs on this rolling annual basis.
So some of the items that are on the, on the, uh, report are tools or tape or those sorts of things and, and that becomes property of the township.
Yes, yeah, any tools or, or equipment that is purchased becomes a property of the township if for some reason the contract were terminated, all that stuff would remain here with the township as well as any parts inventory or, uh, maintenance supplies that would have been purchased.
And that's where it's currently housed?
It's all housed here.
Okay.
All of it is local onsite, it is not anyplace else.
Are there any other question?
I guess the follow-up to that, it would be, you know, is there an inventory that's maintained and overall general inventory?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, we inventory especially water service parts, um, repair parts, and so those are on an inventory basis and now which ones are utilized and of course, even in the maintenance allowance, it details where water service repairs, addresses have been performed and if we need to, we can, um, correlate, you know, the parts usage with all those addresses.
All right, so I guess a follow-up to the follow-up then. So those, uh, those items are somehow tagged?
Well, they're, they're not tagged, um, basically, we, we keep inventory sheets, you know, how many are utilized and how many are purchased and um, all of that, uh, is maintained in, in our records that can be presented to you for audit purposes or any other financial accounting that needs to be performed.
Yeah, I think it would be reasonable that we would receive a, an annual inventory of some sort.
We had an initial inventory from the township at the time of the start of the contract and we can certainly update that. Uh, probably, you know, after the end of the, of the contract month in August, maybe in September, that we would update that report for you. Um, I did have one other thing I wanted to mention. Uh, we have been contacted by the Combat Radiance Training Center, the CRTC, in regard to chlorine residuals. Um, at this point in time, uh, of course, the, the city of Alpine, a water treatment plant is where the water is treated and that's distributed to the township and then through the township's water booster pump station on M thirty-two west out of township boundaries to the CRTC. Um, there has been concerns ongoing in regard to chlorine residuals. Um, they are under guidelines because of having, you know, federal activities on site that they need to maintain a certain chlorine residual. Um, however, uh, the township doesn't perform any treatment on the water, the water's coming treated from the city. And, um, the, the cause of, the underlying cause of the problem is that there's quite a long section of very large water main between the booster station and the CRTC. Um, that kind of acts sort of like an underground storage tank. Um, and what happens is the water is not being turned over sufficiently to maintain that chlorine residual. The chlorine residual degrades over time as it sits in there. Um, the township does have a contract with the CRTC that specifies a minimum amount that they are supposed to be utilizing on a day-to-day basis. They are much below that and so that is, I feel the root cause of this issue is that they're not turning that water over in that pipe sufficiently. Um, they have approached the township about reinstat- instating the, um, chlorination at the booster pump station, however, that's not really going to do anything if they're still not turning water over in that pipe and it could cause a chlorine taste and odor issue for anyone between the booster station and the CRTC and we don't want to do that, we don't want to have residents or other persons that are affected by that negatively. Um, and also they have, uh, at one point, when they were, had a mission that they were having, coming onto base, they did some significant flushing of their own system and found that the chlorine residuals came up quite nicely. So it really is a matter of water usage, so just in case anyone is. came up quite nicely. So it really is a matter of water usage. So just in case anyone is approached, you know, in regard to this, um, that's, that's where the discussion lays. Um, they have asked if the township would be willing to do flushing before their water meter and use, uh, water to boost that chlorine residual going onto the base at an expense that would be borne by the township because it would not be able to be recovered, um, from anyone as far as, you know, metered water usage. And so the water would still have to be paid for by the township to the city of Alpena, but it would not be billed to an individual entity. So that is something that would be a negative financial impact on the township. I don't know which one of you.
You don't view John?
So when, when the new jail has happened running, would that help the problem?
It will help, but we don't know, you know, even though the, the occupancy could be a hundred persons. You know, one would hope that it's not going to be continuously a hundred persons because, you know, we like to think this is a law-abiding community. Right? So, um, and even at such, even if it were a hundred persons, it's still not going to um, provide enough turnover to make up the difference between what the, the CRTC is using currently and what they are contracted to use. Yes.
Is the only other solution to this looping the line and bringing it back? And so it's running back to another.
That would probably exacerbate the problem because now you have more line with water sitting in it.
Um, well, I meant to try to run it back through into the main part of the system, but that's a, would be a very expensive.
Oh, yes, absolutely. You know.
I mean, this is an end-of-line situation.
It is an end-of-line situation. Um, the, the, the discussion that we had with, um, CRTC personnel last year, um, was in regard to the fact that, you know, could they implement, if they needed to boost the chlorine, could they implement it on their end of the line? Where it would actually be efficient to do so instead of adding chlorine and then still having it sitting in this very large line. The thing is, is that they are not a separate water system now. They used to have a well system, so they were a separate water system. Now they are not. And so they, therefore, they would have to apply for and basically have their own water treatment system that then would have to be operated by a certified operator. And it's not that any of that is not doable, but, you know, the expense of doing so and and whatever would then be borne by the, the CRTC as opposed to the township. So I, much more discussion needs to be had between the township and base personnel in regard to how to best resolve this. Um, basically, the, the underlying fact is if they were using as much water as they're contracted to, I think this would be a non-issue.
Trustee Paul.
So it's, if they would be using more water, the problem would be resolved, but also is maybe the original line that was put in may have been put in too big?
Um, the line was sized to provide fire, um, response out there. Um, you know, that line feeds the CRTC and also the, the airport. And so because of the type of activities that are occurring, um, they wanted to have sufficiency for fire response. Um, actually, the, the booster pump station has two normally operated pumps that provide pressure to that line under routine operations. And then a third, much larger pump that is supposed to be triggered by any kind of a fire event or, uh, you know, a hydrant being opened on that end of the line that would cause a a pressure drop that that larger pump then would provide adequate flowing pressure to respond to a fire event.
So it sounds like a user issue.
It is in large part. And, and that's, you know, that's the discussion. You know, I know that the, the CRTC is a large economic, uh, participant in the region and, and obviously the township wants to be cooperative, but it's a matter of if that expense were undertaken by the township, it would have to be then spread over your other ratepayers. And why should a normal resident pay a portion of the cost that is being funded by the Department of Defense? You're already funding it through your taxes.
Yes, Ross.
And, and the, I guess then, the, the other question is if, if they were, you say they were contracted.
There is a written contract. At the time, the booster pump station was put in and that line was installed that they would take, I believe it's either fifty or fifty-five thousand gallons of water per day as a minimum.
So are we billing on the contractor at them or are we billing on the usage?
We're billing it on their usage.
Okay, so they're not fulfilling the contract?
They are not fulfilling the contract.
And, uh, is the reason they didn't fulfill the contract last year because they didn't have units in for training?
Exactly. They have, they don't have the demand out there for the volume of water that they originally anticipated that they were going to need. Um, I wasn't here, obviously, at the time that, that was all constructed and what type of activities, if it was an active base that had a lot more utilization.
It's there, it's an active base this year.
Well, active in the sense that it's still manned, but I'm saying that.
No, I'm talking about units coming in and a lot more personnel on base.
Yeah.
So if that, if, if it was just an anomaly for a year, maybe the problem goes away.
Yeah. We've requested from them their data um, in regard to, because they do do internal monitoring of their water conditions, uh, obviously, or they wouldn't know that there's a little chlorine residual out there. So they do internal monitoring and we've asked them for data, both flow and chlorine residual data historical, um, so that it can be correlated to what kind of flows they were, were seeing, what kind of utilization they had, what the chlorine residuals were, whether chlorine was being added at the booster pump station. Um, basically, the records that were most recent before the boot, the chlorine was removed from the booster pump station uh, indicated that chlorine was being added at somewhere along the point of a tenth of a pound a day, which is a diminutious, diminutious amount. Um, you know, and it really wasn't boosting the chlorine going out there that much and still doesn't alleviate. Like I said, if we can add more chlorine, but you're going to have complaints from the people on the line in between. And it's an expense, you know, that would be, would be spread over the users and then also isn't going to resolve the problem if that water is still sitting in that line. Um, EPA recommendation is that a water storage vessel, which in this particular case, the main is sort of acting like a water storage vessel, a very long, narrow one, but, um, that the detention time should be no greater than five days and preferably three days. So the amount of water that they would need to use, they need to use an additional fifteen to seventeen thousand gallons of water a day in order to meet that five-day turnover. And they are not utilizing that for normal operations. Now, they have undertaken some flushing at their expense. Um, and they did say that it was, you, you know, was, uh, caught, you know, alleviating the problem. But we're finding those, of course, during the summer months, water temperatures are warmer and the chemical reaction with chlorine basically speeds up when the water temperatures are warmer. So the chlorine residual dissipates faster during the summer than it does during the winter.
When they test their own chlorine levels, uh, are they using a licensed, uh, water, uh, facility management?
No, they, they have their own personnel on base, but they're also not reporting that data to it. We do also monitor the chlorine residual at the gates. So we have undertaken a weekly routine, uh, every Friday that we we, we do chlorine testing at the booster station and then follow it with chlorine testing at the main gate of the base so that we have that data. And I've been putting that together this morning, actually, in a graphic form so that Mr. Skibby and I can look at that and then, you know, discuss this further and then with the CRTC personnel as well.
Any other questions for Ms. Wynn? Thank you very much for your report.
Thank you.
Uh, this leads us to our second opportunity for public comment. If there's any public comment, please stand at the podium and state your name. Is there anyone online that has public comment? If so, please raise your hand or shoot a text so that we know you have a question or a comment. Again, last opportunity for public comment. If there's any public comment, please, online, please raise your hand or, uh, shoot us a text. Seeing and hearing none, uh, discussion amongst the board. Yes, Lord.
Um, I just wanted to, um, just give a little basic update. Um, everyone's familiar with the green address emergency signs that people have on their mailboxes typically with the numbers on them. Um, it helps, you know, emergency vehicles, you know, find find residents. Um, the, they've been kept over on the fire department side and we get a lot of customers coming in and asking, um, if we can, you know, provide them with a green sign. Um, we just had the last stack brought over, um, so it might, they may last maybe a year. Um, but just to give a little background on these signs, we've been, um, they were provided through a grant. So this is just a little background information from the county, but when Jim Pelter was at the county, um, money was allocated, this was in the early two thousands. Um, money was allocated out of the ambulance fund to initially purchase the signs for all the townships to put up for nine-one-one. All of the townships were awarded money to purchase, um, what they needed to put the nine-one-one signs up all over their township and the project was completed prior to two thousand and five. There has not been any money allocated in the ambulance budget at the county. Um, but money for the first responders was restored to the townships to use um, for their programs. And perhaps, I mean, if we needed, we could use that money to purchase more green signs if need be. Um, right now, when we have to order the reflective numbers, that money comes out of, um, the public safety fund for that, for those reasons. Um, and just another side of this, um, there, when the road commission, um, has a sign for a new private road, um, only one time, um, the road, when the road is established and it's approved by the township board, the road commission, um, we're allowed to give them, you know, the number to put up. So we do have several signs that were made up over the years before I came here that already have numbers on them that when somebody has time, you know, we need to go out and give them to those people. I've sent letters and some people come in and, um, we try to utilize those numbers that are already pre-made. Um, I found out that there's another stack at South Side with numbers already on them as well. Um, and we do have a list. But anyway, just wanted to give an update that at some point in time, if we could, you know, maybe write a grant for more green signs, um, because they really do help with their emergency services, so.
I, I have a point of discussion, uh, that I'll probably be bringing back to a subsequent meeting, uh, as a, a new business item. I've started some discussion, uh, with Denise Klein at NEMCOG as to putting together, uh, the potentials of what a cost of a, a township-wide survey would be. Um, because obviously, as we continue down various paths, there's a lot of unknowns. Uh, and throughout this entire process with the, the discussion of fire departments of what other needs are needed, uh, and what people's opinions are towards the services that they want or the services that they need and trying to get some, this original discourse of what something that would have, uh, some teeth scientifically, so there's no duplicity. You can't bombard and ruin a survey, but, uh, just starting that conversation because I think, uh, part of the, the inevitable discussion with, uh, the direction, uh, that, and discussion that's been had thus far with the fire department is the inevitable potential of, uh, requesting a millage. And I think, uh, if we've learned anything in discussions and our transparency is let's entertain the people giving their input to the direction that they would like to take. Um, so I'm getting together, uh, just some ancillary costs. Obviously, then the board could really discuss what things are going to be compiled on that, but I think that way we can have the opportunity to have some really open dialogue of what, uh, the future is for the township and what the people's participation levels would, uh, afford us moving forward. Yes, trust me.
Do you have that by the next minute?
I'm working on it. Yeah.
And, and, and I agree. I think that's, that's a good thing to do. But I think we all, each individually as members of this board, have to remember that we're elected here to make decisions.
Yeah.
Not to, um, I mean, I always believe that open communication, town halls, surveys are a good thing, but ultimately the decisions have to be made here amongst other people. Right, one, two, three. Um, and, uh, so, um, I'm not intending to abrogate my responsibility no matter what a survey might say, and I, I just want everybody to understand that. So, you know, let's look at the cost, let's look at the feasibility. I think it's good. I think it might help inform some of us on how to best represent our constituents. But ultimately, we have to make the decisions. We've made, uh, some recently that, you know, we weren't unity on. But that doesn't matter. We made them as a board and, uh, we, we now, uh, go with, with, uh, with that as a board. Um, I did want to address, uh, Ms. Snyder's comments about the problem she was having. I may be wrong, but I interpret that not as a problem of our fire department or anybody else going out and responding when dispatched to a phone call about a fire or anything else. Uh, I had a neighbor do that with me one time too, and, and Dave came out and I think Chris and, and, uh, checked how I was burning my debris in my yard. Uh, so, um, I have problems with neighbors for probably some of the same or maybe different reasons than other people do, but, uh, that was, uh, but that's what I see this probably being is every, uh, problem with a neighbor. And I think if it continues and it, our departments and dispatch is used as a, as a tool to harass somebody, there are other ways, uh, to guide her in helping her find the right remedy for that problem such as, uh, cease and desist orders or, or, uh, uh, personal protection orders if it comes to that. But, but, uh, just, uh, when, when facilities are used inappropriately, it's not by us or our departments, it's by somebody else.
Whether, whether it be that conversation or going back to ordinance one thirty-seven in Blight, um, the vast majority of instances could honestly be addressed by simple communication amongst neighbors. I've often said that a community is only as strong as the relationship that we have with our neighbors. Uh, and I think that we don't have a very strong community at some point, so. Um, but it's a wonderful one and that unfortunately holds true, uh, more often than not, that, uh, the utilization and the introduction of municipality, whether it be an ordinance or, uh, a service, uh, it, it should never be a, a tool used for leverage, uh, amongst a civil dispute.
No, and I, I think, Trustee Croll, Deputy Croll was well familiar with how people use different types of public entities. So if that's what she identifies as the problem, I was just addressing it because I knew you were going to communicate.
I, I'm going to reach out to her as I should, just to get some more detail to the background of what spurred her on. But I, I implore all citizens of the township to, uh, come to these meetings and, and use their time at public comments. Um, is there any other discussion for the good of the ordinance?
I was just going to say about the survey, it might also let us know where we need to educate people to what areas.
Oh, yeah, I, I think that there's, and I, I agree. Uh, obviously, we are a representative government and I think we all need to do our due diligence and remember that we have to make the final decision, uh, whether it's a tough one or an easy one. Uh, we always love the easy ones. Um, but I think anytime we can get input, um, because my fear is, um, putting everything on the burden of a tax, uh, as, as a millage. Uh, but that doesn't mean that we can't explore what our, our, our growth options are and where our limitations are and how we can utilize potential requests as millages or figure out creative solutions, but we don't have to burden our, our, our basis with taxes, but at least get that conversation going. Um, that way we can make the best informed decision. So I'll, I'll, I'll hopefully have that on the agenda, at least some uh, set costs of what it would look like, how would that survey would be performed to, to retain as much legitimacy uh, as any survey could. Um, I know that, uh, our utilization of NEMCOG in history for surveys has been exemplary. Uh, that was under the guise of, uh, Rick Duel when he was with NEMCOG, but they still have wonderful, uh, individuals that, that service our area. So I will hopefully have something on our next agenda. Is there any other discussion amongst the board?
How old is the last survey?
Eight years. Seven or eight?
Was it just one though that drove people to the website?
It was went through the texts.
It, well, so that's one of the discussions I'm having with Denise is because obviously our, our core demographic is, is elderly. Uh, and I think that, uh, certain technologies could be as much of a disadvantage as it would be an advantage. You don't need to raise your hand, Russ. I wasn't even looking at. Um, but we, we need to figure out the, the, the best way to track, whether that's hard copies or a utilization of numerous technologies, but have an identification number that's so they, obviously, if it's online, they can track IP addresses. Um, so that kind of allows them to know that, you know, one.
Person didn't go in forty times.
Forty times and fill out to get their way. Um, so I, I hope to have something back to this board in that at least we will know a cost and then we can start discussing as a board. Um, what directions, what conversations do we want to ask of our, our residents? What is the, the, the vision of our future? So, because my fear is that our, our community has been burdened, uh, quite intensely over the past couple of years with, uh, very. intensely over the past couple of years with various millage requests. And how many more millages can our citizens sustain? That's going to be a threshold as well. So.
It's going to be depending on what type of services they want as well.
Oh, yeah. No, I think that's. So is there any other discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. We have a motion on the table by Trustee Polley to adjourn. Is there support? It's been moved and supported. Any further discussion?
We support it.
If there's no other discussion, Steve, one second. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye. Meeting adjourned at twelve thirty. Thank you very much.